This is the November 18th meeting. We'll note that all commissioners are present. Are there any modifications to the order of business? Hearing none, would there be a motion to approve the order of business?
So moved.
Second.
We have the motion and the second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, the motion say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. The motion carries. The next item is the consent agenda. Are there any items on the consent agenda you wish to discuss? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mrs. Stuttgart?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, the motion carries. We'll begin with tab number four, and the first item there is to hear the financial report.
Good evening, Mr. President Commissioners. I'll highlight a few items from the financial report through October. We'll begin with the general fund report. With eighty-three percent of the year completed, our property taxes equal $3.4 million, and we're ninety-seven percent collected compared to budget. Our other taxes and fees total $239,000, and are ninety-eight percent collected compared to budget. Our intergovernmentals, which include revenues we receive from state and local governments, such as the highway distribution tax and the oil production tax, totals $3.2 million and is seventy-seven percent collected compared to budget. Our licenses, fees, and services includes building permit revenue, oil royalties, and administrative fees, and is eighty-four percent collected compared to budget. Our building permit revenue is up $198,000 over last year, and this category also includes our municipal court fines, which are up $54,000 over last year. Our total general fund revenues equal $9.4 million through October, and were seventy percent collected compared to budget. Our general fund expenses are broken down into groups. Our general government includes administration, court, finance, and buildings and grounds, and is ninety-two percent expended compared to budget. Our overage here is due to prosecution and attorney costs, and the purchase of the office building next to City Hall. Our public safety includes police and fire, and is seventy-one percent expended compared to budget. Our engineering and streets, which includes community development, is ninety-one percent expended compared to budget. The overage here is due to plan reviews in our engineering department, and budgeted equipment purchases in our streets department. Our cultural services includes museum and forestry, and is seventy-nine percent expended compared to budget. And our total general fund expenses equal $10.6 million, and we're seventy-eight percent expended compared to budget. In our enterprise funds, our water and wastewater revenues equal $7.7 million through October, and we're one hundred and five percent collected compared to budget. Our expenses and capital outlays total $17.6 million, but this does include nine million dollars' worth of transfers to the building construction fund from the SRF loan proceeds for the water reclamation facility. Without this transfer, we are one hundred and seventeen percent expended compared to budget. The solid waste fund revenue is $3.8 million through October, which is ninety-nine percent collected compared to budget. And our expenses and capital outlays total $2.2 million, which is fifty-nine percent expended compared to budget. In our sales tax reports, in our one percent sales tax fund, we received $748,000 of revenue in October, which is up three point five percent for the year. Our one percent sales tax is broken into three groups. The first is the fifty percent share, which is for street projects and infrastructure. The second is our twenty percent share, which is for job creation and senior programs. The expenses through October total $756,000 in this segment. And our thirty percent share is set aside for capital improvements. The expenses here are $50,000 for a portion of the BAC pledge payment, and we also have budgeted the animal, or excuse me, trails construction and park and rec improvements. In our half percent sales tax, we received $374,000 of revenue in October, which is up three point five percent for the year, and we're budgeting $4 million toward the public works building construction. In our hospitality tax, we received $93,000 of revenue in October, which is down eight point five percent over last year. Our expenses include a million dollars for the final BAC pledge payment, $50,000 for the Stark County Veterans Memorial, and $37,000 for the environmental assessment at the airport. In our occupancy tax, our revenues total $53,000 for October, which is down twenty-nine percent over last year. Our expenses include $270,000 to the CVB for their subsidy, $60,000 for the special events grant, $5,000 to the Rough Rider Commission, and $17,000 for the downtown revitalization. In our street projects report, we received $270,000 in revenues, and we've expended $2 million towards projects through October. In our development impact fee program, we have added $3 million worth of assessments to the tax roll at the end of October. We now have $1.2 million in projects that are yet to be reimbursed, and $300,000 yet to be assessed. Those are some of the highlights of the financial statements. You also should have received copies of the 2012 audited financial report and the federal awards report. The reports are dated October 7th, which is two months earlier than we received them last year. We have again received an unqualified opinion, which means the statements present fairly in all material respects the financial position of the city. I, Bailey, will be here at the next meeting to present the report. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mrs. Johnson?
Can you refresh our memories, one percent sales tax? What did we budget this year? What did we collect last year? Do you have that handy?
For the one percent?
Mm-hmm.
We budgeted, I believe, to be even with last year, and we received just a little over seven million, and we're tracking three percent ahead right now.
And we use the same number?
I believe so.
Okay.
That I don't have.
Thank you.
Mrs. Johnson, I think, you know, we have some negative balances, and I know they're in two construction funds, the West River Community Center and the Building Construction Fund, which is all the other city construction projects. Are you expecting that by year-end with the transfer of funds and the additional borrowings from the state revolving fund that those will be small negatives, or at least, or maybe even brought to zero?
Correct. Normally, in both of those funds, the SRF loan, for instance, are reimbursable grants, or loans, excuse me, so we would show a negative until we receive our funds. But we do have some of our dollars that will be transferring into those, so we should see a positive number, or close to zero, at the end of the year.
In both of those?
In both.
Okay. And then I noticed the fund that we use for sewer backups is down to a very low number. Have we had more issues with sewer backups here recently?
I'm not sure if there's been more issues. We've definitely had more claims. We've had $46,000 worth of claims this year. We are increasing the amount that we will be charging to fifty cents per customer next year to help build that fund up, but we're also increasing the limit on how much you can be reimbursed for an event next year as well.
And what, refresh my memory, why have we had more claims this year?
That I'm not sure if we've had more issues. I don't know if Mr. Zurov can answer that better than I can.
Was there a storm event, or?
At Sim Street? I'm not sure exactly why there's more claims. I think there's been more claims in the last couple of years, and that fund's been continually depleting. I think that rate's been the same for a number of years, and my understanding it's been on a depleting level the last couple of years. I don't know of any more this year necessarily than last year. I think dollar amounts are up on each backup, of course, with the cost of construction and everything else going on.
If the commission desires, we can put together a report for you to show you exactly where those claims were, and if there's any patterns at the next commission meeting.
I think you have enough to do. You don't, I just, I didn't remember the balance being quite as low as it is, and so I was just wondering if we'd had some event here.
I thought we had one major situation up north on that Sim Street project. You don't remember, huh?
Commissioner Steiner, we may well have. I don't recall. I know we've had several new, I don't want to say miles, of sewer line that we have to accept because of new construction, but we certainly have more lines than we did in previous years.
President Johnson, Commission Two, I know, talking to Jeff Bresnan with the Water Utility Manager, I know on some of the lift stations, there used to be time and to react and to repair, say, the lift station. In other words, there wasn't much flow. Right now, with the quantities coming in, everything is, there's not the time there used to be. And I know in a couple situations, since I've been here, that's been the case, is that either power's gone down or something else, and because of the extreme flows coming in, there isn't the time to, that we had in the past. I know another instance that was a bore, that I think that there was a claim on that to lift station down, and some borings that have happened with all the construction going on, that hit one of our force mates. Though I guess those are some of the instances I'm aware of.
Okay, thank you. Would there be any other questions for Mrs. Johnson? Okay. Well, we have a 4:45 timetable agenda item. This is a presentation by the engineering firm, HDR, and we'll let you introduce yourself and make your presentation.
Thank you, President Johnson. I'm Brent Erickson, excuse me, with HDR Engineering. HDR was requested by city engineering and public works staff to attend an audit of the municipal separate storm sewer system, which we always refer to as MS4, audit by the North Dakota Department of Health. This occurred in September. Purpose of this is educational for the commission, observations and recommendations, and this presentation, I'll give you a brief overview of the MS4 permitting, the permit requirements, how that's been incorporated in the city of Dickinson, a summary of the audit, observations and recommendations, and then any questions the commission may have. So the first thing is, what is an MS4? It is any publicly owned and operated stormwater drainage system. It's your streets, it's your curb and gutter, it's your inlets, your pipes, your culverts, it's your open drainage ways through the town, or through your city of Dickinson, that ultimately discharge into the Hart River. The Hart River for Dickinson is the receiving body. All public storm drain systems are MS4s, but not every one is regulated. Regulated MS4s go back to the Clean Water Act in '72. EPA had amendments in '87. In 1990, they actually started regulating communities, and the city of Dickinson was regulated starting in 1999 with the Phase II regulations. Basically, what the Phase II regulations requires, any discharge of water into the waters of the United States require an NPDS permit. You are currently covered under an NPDS permit issued by the state of North Dakota for the This was granted, or issued to the city in 2001. You're not alone in the state. Here is a listing of all the MS4 communities in North Dakota. You'll see it's not only cities, there's four counties, and three of the university campuses have MS4 permits. So the MS4 permit, what are the objectives of it? The objective is, straight from the EPA Phase II rules, is one, reduce the discharge of pollutants and stormwater to the maximum extent practicable, and protect water quality. To do this, the permit requires that the city prepare and keep updated an MS4 stormwater management plan that also include, that that plan includes measurable goals and objectives. The permit requires inspection, documentation, and record keeping, and the permit also requires annual reporting to the North Dakota Department of Health. Something I want to point out is, the MS4 regulates stormwater quality, not stormwater quantity, as is shown in that picture. So flooding, storm drain pipe sizing, this permit doesn't deal with that. The permit is for strictly stormwater and water quality. Permit overview is, the permit requires a stormwater management plan that addresses six minimum control measures. They are, for every MS4 permit, public outreach and education, public participation, illicit discharge and detection, construction site stormwater runoff control program, or erosion control from construction sites, post-construction stormwater management, and finally pollution control for municipal operations. For each of the six control, minimum controls, the stormwater management plan needs to identify best management practices that include measurable goals and objectives, and also an estimated schedule and frequency for the implementation of each BMP. The city of Dickinson did develop a stormwater management plan for the MS4 permit in 2001, included some best management practices for each of the controls. As we found in the audit, it did not include measurable goals and objectives for each best management practice. Not going to go through in great detail each of the controls, but best management practice doesn't have to be a structural, it can be an idea. And so for public education, public participation, these goals really go together. For public education, this presentation would be considered a best management practice to the commission, because it is education, it's being recorded for the television, and it's there. Your cleanup day that you have associated with the landfill, any of your, that the city does, any of the city materials for household hazardous waste, those are all public education and public participation. Those are included as best management practices, measurable goals in the stormwater management plan, they would be counted by the health department as meeting the requirement. Illicit discharges are anything that get into the stormwater that is not directly stormwater. Examples are sewage from residents where maybe that backs up in their basement and goes out, a floor drain that's connected to the storm drain system. Also illegal dumping from pumping, sanitary sewer cross-connection that can happen during construction of new developments. The other big one is improper disposable waste and household toxics. There are exemptions, lawn watering, residential car washing, fertilizing your lawn, those are not, those are not considered illicit discharges. The MS4 permit requirements, requires that the city have an established process for reporting illicit discharges, training city staff to identify illicit discharges, and having documentation processes that it's, that if an illicit discharge occurs, or there's a spill in a city roadway, city highway, that there's a cleanup method, and then it's documented that it occurred. Construction sites and post-construction, they're both minimum controls. These are the easiest ones for us to understand as engineers. The best management practices here are structural, many times sediment fences and waddles to control construction erosion. For post-construction, it can be, this is a grassy swale where the stormwater has to flow through the grass, and sediments are slowed and dropped out. Same thing in a parking lot where it's reverse graded, and the water comes to the grassy swell before entering the system. And this is an extended detention pond that was sized not for water quantity, but water quality to actually stay wet longer than a few hours. Those are all examples of best management practices. And the final one are municipal, final minimum control is municipal facilities. This is really the city's housekeeping procedures for their city-owned facilities, properties. Permit requires that you establish operation and maintenance program. For example, the city public workshop here, there's a MS4 discharge right there. Permit also requires that the city inspect and report on twenty percent of the outfalls that are included in the MS4. I believe there are seventeen to twenty of those to the Hart River. Also, that the city have a staff education program for good housekeeping, and also the illicit discharge. Finally, is prepare and keep current stormwater pollution prevention plans for each public facility. Now, here's an example of some of the public facilities that have a SWIP plan, or have had a SWIP plan prepared in the past, they haven't been updated in a while. There's a wastewater treatment plant, public works, building and shop, it's the existing one, the landfill. Any other city properties, and then parks and open space, those are, since they're inside of the city and owned by the public, they're included in the MS4 program. So that is really a whirlwind description of what the MS4 permit is, where it came from, and why the city has it. September 16th, North Dakota Department of Health conducted an audit of the city's MS4 The MS4 permits are renewed every five years. The state audits each of the MS4s in that five-year period. Dickinson was one of the last communities to be audited. The findings of the, in general, the audit was positive. I think city staff that attended, Mr. Zurov attended, Mr. Cortan attended, we also had Jeff Bresnan from the Water Department was there for the whole audit, and also Jerry Sheer from Engineering was there for the whole audit, and then myself. We went into it, we knew that there were some holes in the documentation. In general, it was very positive from the Department of Health that the city is trying, that they, we recognize that improvements can be made. The Department of Health also understands that there's been a massive city staff turnover and loss of institutional knowledge. What we found during the audit is, from 2001 to 2009, there's excellent records, good documentation, and annual reporting occurred every year. Since 2010, records were a little harder to find, there were some available. It also appears that there has not been any annual reporting since the 2009 annual report. To the Department of Health, it was not clear the, who the program administrator, the program control was for the MS4.
Is that after 2010, you're saying it's not clear?
It's not clear presently. This is where my institutional knowledge isn't as well with names as it could be, but there was a city staff person assigned that left after 2009.
You're correct, we did have staff turnover at that time. And in between 2010 and just until Mr. Zurov was hired, I think we were kind of just running it within, we didn't have anybody with the knowledge and so on. So I'm assuming that the meetings and the information's going to be updated by Mr. Zurov from here on out.
Mm-hmm. What, many of the activities, we recognize, the Department of Health recognized that many of the activities were occurring, the documentation and record keeping, and potentially the emphasis of some of it. There was a perception that there was an emphasis on the construction erosion control practices, because that's the boom right now, when really the MS4, that's just one component of it, and it's, the bulk of it is public outreach, documentation, the housekeeping of the municipal facilities, the maintenance of the existing facilities and the illicit discharge. So as the city's grown over the last five-plus years, the duties involved have really increased exponentially too. And so that's really number six up there, confusion in the purpose of the requirements of the MS4 permit. It's water quantity, not quantity. You have a stormwater ordinance that requires a stormwater management plan for every construction project. It's really a quantity-based stormwater management plan. Even though they use the same terminology, they're not really from the same branch of the tree. The stormwater management plan, that's an MS4 stormwater management plan, deals specifically with stormwater quality. And into the, from the audit, the Department of Health required, recommended, suggested the following actions. Stormwater management plan, the MS4 stormwater management plan should be revised to reflect the current conditions, including best management practices and activities that the city is currently doing, staff that is responsible for those activities, and then record keeping and documentation procedures. Number two is identify the MS4 program and administer any staff for each component. Documentation of inspections for construction erosion control. Engineering staff is doing as best as they can right now, engineering and building and community development. You know, it's a lot of construction happening out there. Documentation is really the key. Number four is develop and maintain a current city storm drain map. The city has a storm drain map, it has not been updated in about three years, and with the amount of development that's occurred, the state had a question if there were additional outfalls. Also, that map is really used in your listed discharge controls of identifying the spots where contamination can get to the waters of the United States and the waters of North Dakota. Number five is, MS4 outfalls had not been inspected and reported since 2009. They asked that all outfalls, not twenty percent, be inspected and reported, and the reports included in the annual report for 2013. Last one is prepare, adopt, and submit a 2013 annual report to the state Department of Health no later than January 31st, 2014, as required by the permit. We, HDR, did a summary memorandum, it's included in your packet. We included some recommendations in there that we saw from our observations. We've really discussed all of them, you know, city identifying, MS4 coordinator, updating your stormwater plan, updating your SWIP plans, and then preparing and submitting the annual report as requested and required by the Department of Health. It's a lot of information. I appreciate you allowing me to present this to you. It was an educational experience for me, and good luck in continuing your program. And if you have any questions, please let me know right now.
I have one question. The map of the stormwater system, Mr. Cortan, isn't, the map of the stormwater system, isn't that one that we thought we could add to the GIS?
It's one that we're looking at. We've had some discussions with the consultant, and looked at fees for public works, and then also for that as well. But we haven't got it together to submit it to you as a commission, any revisions to the contract to include that, but that's something we could look at.
I guess, Mr. Kessel, I'll direct the question to you, but do you have any disagreements with HDR's recommendations there, that last slide?
Certainly not. I think the issues, they're pretty clearly documented. In 2009, if you recall, that was when we changed Public Works Director position, and we combined that with the city engineer position. And at that time, we had a separation of employee of the individual who was taking care of the MS4 audit material. Upon a recommendation of the city engineer, we changed responsibilities to be bifurcated so that the educational component was done by one job description, and the actual written documentation side was done by another. That obviously has not worked out very well, and in speaking with Mr. Zurov, I think we have a better plan to move forward.
Do we have the resources to implement all the things that HDR has recommended and make that state deadline by January 31st?
I think I'd like Mr. Zurov to answer that directly.
President Johnson, Commission, some of those
President Johnson, Commissioner, some of those issues we've already addressed. The Water Department has gone out and identified a lot of the outfalls. We're trying to figure out staffing, and I have a short presentation that I'll present to you on how I consider, or how I will consider how I can staff that position. So right now, we're going through the list, and I think we'll be able to get it done by the end of January.
Okay, you'll have more to say about that than during the Public Works report?
Correct.
Are there any other comments, questions? Okay, thank you for your report, Mr. Exon. Okay, we have a 5:00 timetable agenda item, and Mr. Keith Anton would like to address the commission, so, Mr. Anton, welcome.
Good evening, President Dennis Johnson, Vice President Gene Jackson, and Commissioners. I am Keith Anton from Dickinson, and I believe that Dickinson has a left-hand turn problem going both directions at the Vilarde and 10th Avenue East. During the busy hours of the day, it is very hard to make these turns safely. I do not know if there has been any accidents at this area, but I have seen some close calls, and have you thought about putting up a traffic light? This light could be turned on during the rush hour, and when there is a lot of traffic going both directions. There has been other people talking about this traffic mess. And have you also thought about a North Dickinson sign at the exit 59? Because you do not have to, then you'll have to go to exit 61 and wait to make a left-hand turn, and I have seen many vehicles waiting to make the turn to go north, and the flow of traffic would be better at the exit 59 location. I'm sure that there are other spots to look at, but there are these two spots that need attention right away, and I just wanted to see what your answer is for this situation. Thank you very much on listening to my concerns for the city of Dickinson, and please have a great evening.
Thank you, Mr. Anton. I think you could have added several other intersections for left-hand turn issues in our community, the traffic has--
But I noticed that 10th Avenue East, and you know, that's the worst spot, you know. When you're on Vilarde, that's the easy part of getting across, but you know, right at 10th Avenue East, trying to make a left-hand turn there during the busy times, it's almost impossible to do, you know, so I was just--
Would, is there anyone here at the commission table that would like to comment on 10th Avenue East and Vilarde, that intersection? Mr. Kubus?
President Johnson, Commissioner. Mr. Anton and I did speak last week, or the week before that, and the 10th Avenue East intersection with Vilarde has been discussed with many parties over the past several years. Before us, currently, we have a plat at that corner right now, and so we are in discussion with the DOT, making sure that right away an access is preserved at that intersection for an improvement that may be made in the future. Right now, there's nothing, I wouldn't say set in stone, for an improvement to 10th Avenue East, but we'll stay in communication with the DOT. We talked at a staff meeting this morning about implementing some traffic counts to make sure that, we're keeping an eye on the volumes at that intersection to make sure that it meets warrants, if a signal would be the answer for that intersection. And then, on the other issue that Mr. Anton spoke about for the access on exit 59, I'll touch on that later on the engineering report, but I know the DOT has a couple of projects ongoing that should address that situation.
Yeah, I know it's our intent to, if you're northbound on Highway 22 and you're eastbound on I-94, is to encourage people to exit at 59 and go north there, but that's presently under construction, so that's really not a good alternative at the moment. But once the construction is finished there, that will be a very good alternative, and miss, you know, try to avoid exit 61, that is, no question about it, that's a bottleneck. It was never designed for the kind of traffic that we're experiencing.
Well, because I know about it, but it's the people that are out of town that don't know about it, and they don't know what they're getting themselves into, you know, so, you know, I just thought, you know, I was thinking of them more than anybody else.
No, no question about it. I think once exit 59 is, that roadway north is complete, those that travel this area on a regular basis will certainly understand that that's a better way to go if they want to go north on 22. Communicating with those who have not regularly come through here will be more of a challenge. But if they have to do it more than once, they'll figure it out, I think.
Yes.
Yeah.
President Johnson, one more thing?
Yes.
You mentioned signalization as an option, or a solution to that problem, and I just wanted to throw out that one of the other potential solutions that are being looked at is a roundabout at that location. So it may not, it may include a solution that may be a little out of the box, at least for western North Dakota. So I just wanted to throw that out to make sure that the solutions are, could be many and varied, rather than just a signal.
You know, at the 22 exit?
At 10th Avenue East.
Okay.
Yeah.
At 10th Avenue, oh, okay, yes.
And Vilarde there, yeah.
Yes, okay, okay.
Have you been through the Killdeer?
Not lately, but at once, but that's been a while.
Okay. That potential exists.
Because that roundabout, that's a good way, a good flow of traffic, you know.
I think it was actually addressed with the DOT at that time when we were making the plans for redoing Vilarde all the way through, and the cost for a roundabout is something that, you know, it's not just paving for exits there or whatever. It's a costly project, you just got to take a look at what Killdeer did, but I know we did have discussions with them about a roundabout there, and it just, it didn't make it any farther than that. But still doesn't mean it's not a bad idea.
Mm-hmm. Well, thank you very much, and have a great evening.
You, too, Mr. Anton. Thank you for appearing. We'll go down to tab four again, item B, Rough Rider Commission request. Mr. Kessel, are you handling this?
I am, thank you, Mayor Johnson. In 2013, the Rough Rider Commission fireworks displays anticipated to cost about $15,000, and the city has agreed, as you heard earlier from Finance Director Johnson, that we will cover the cost of about $5,000 of that 15, or about one-third of the total cost. The Rough Rider Commission in '14 has asked that we, that they increase the display to $20,000, and have asked us as a city to pay that whole increase of $5,000 going from 15 to 20. That would increase our share from one-third as it exists today to one-half of the total expenses. It would be our staff recommendation that we maintain the one-third cost split and thereby increase our funding from $5,000 to $6,700, and that in future years, that their requests be made at the time of the budget creation and during the subsidy meeting, as are most of the requests of this type and variety. To enact a change, it would require the city commission to amend the 2014 budget for the amount that you deem appropriate, and these expenses are, have been paid out of the occupancy tax in the past. So that would, that would be our recommendation and conclude my report on that issue unless there's question.
Thank you, Mr. Kessel. Are there any comments or questions? Is there any action you'd like to take here as a commission?
So we're talking just for this one year until I come of course with another proposal at the next round.
Correct. Commissioner Steiner, what we're asking is, or what they have asked is that you act upon an amount that's different. They don't have any dollars in the '14 budget currently, and so they've made that request for $10,000. We're suggesting $6,700 for this year, and the next year, they're included in the subsidy meetings that we hold for similar-type issues.
You're still talking about taking out of the hospitality tax?
Occupancy tax.
Hospital.
We've been taking this out of the occupancy tax in years past, and that we continue in
I don't have a problem with this. Kind of like maintaining the one-third ratio, so the appropriate motion would be to amend the budget to include the $6,700.
That's correct.
Is that correct?
Yeah.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second, further discussion. Hearing no discussion, then we'll vote. Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mrs. Stukart?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. The motion carries. It's pretty close to 5:15. We have a 5:15 timetable agenda item, I think we'll move up to that. This is to hear a presentation on the Public Safety Center. Mr. Kessel, would you like to make any introductory comments?
Thank you, President Johnson. This evening, you're going to hear and see a display about the Public Safety Center by the architectural team of Schutz Foss, represented today by Mr. Alan Rapaz and Shepherd Roth, and Herb Roth from Shepherd Roth will speak as well. And then the construction management is J.E. Dunn, and Mark Melmer will be presenting on their behalf. They'll present the evolution of the building, the programming that's been involved, and the estimates of cost of the current construction. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kessel. President Johnson, members of the commission, city staff. My name is Alan Rapaz, President of Schutz Foss Architects Dickinson. We are going to be presenting the Public Safety Center project in front of you. With me is, Mr. Kessel said, Mr. Herb Roth, who is our design partner, who will present the architectural side, the plans. I will present the progress to date. We do also have a representative from Highlands Engineering here, Andrew Shrink, who can answer any questions on the site if there are any. And we also have Mr. Mark Melmer, who will address the costs. If you remember, we essentially had a two-part contract for design services. We were asked to do our due diligence on this particular parcel of ground, which is north of the corner of 21st and State. There is a floodplain going through it. We were also asked to create a needs assessment for both the Fire Department and the Police Department, as well as prepare a site concept and a site floor plan concept on this particular project. We were also asked to look at the wetlands, stormwater, and also the FEMA floodplain conditions that will affect the design of this project. So that's what we are here today to present to you. Phase two of our contract will be taking it from this point forward into schematic design, design development, contract documents, bidding, and construction services. So what we are here today is to convince you that this is a workable piece of ground for the project that we have programmed. To date, where we are right now, we started our design programming needs assessments the end of July. We spent two solid days with Chief Dasinger from the Police Department, and Chief Sevic and his staff from the Fire Department, went through the needs, asked them to dream a little bit and project into the year of 2040. So this represents the projection up to 2040. There were some growth patterns in the Police Department that were unique, and there were also growth patterns in the Fire Department that were unique, and we'll share those with you. Through the last three months, we have developed the formal needs assessment, we have developed several concept sites, concept floor plans. We've come back and met with city staff and both of the departments, Fire and Police, and have made lots of changes. We originally thought this could be a two-story building to minimize our impact on the site. That has since changed, and I believe that we have come up with a real good, functional, single-story building on this piece of property. Where we started with the needs assessment, we had programmed about 56,500 square feet, and that's a very difficult number because you have to put percentages for circulation, mechanical, electrical. As we proceeded in the design, we ended up submitting a project of about 53,300 square feet, and through the deliberations of the departments with the design team, with the city staff, we are now here presenting a plan of 42,303 square feet. So we took about 20% back out of the project to make it a good project to present to you as a commission. With that, Mr. Roth will represent. We also have additional expansion capabilities beyond 2040, or within the period of 2040, we have about 4,000 square feet for police expansion, and we also have some additional garage interior vehicle storage, and we'll present that in a minute. As we were proceeding in design, we went through the CMAR selection process, and J.E. Dunn rose to the top. We did appoint those, or the city did, after the early part of October. So since the early part of October this last month, we've been able to work very hard together to figure out the price point and work through cost estimates as we are here today, and Mr. Melmer will present some information here today. From this point forward, our projected schedule would be somewheres around, if we're elected to proceed forward, we're looking at January 9th, the DD submittal, end of January for about 25% CDs, construction documents, basically being done with all the documents early April. And that will give us a chance to work with J.E. Dunn and perhaps even prebid some of the foundation work. So with that, we'll take some questions later. We do want to get through our presentation. I'll invite Herb Roth to present the drawings. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Herb Roth. I'm with Roth and Shepherd Architects of Denver. And just a little bit about our firm, for about 30 years, we've been specializing in public safety architecture, including police and fire. To pick up where Alan left off, the site is approximately nine acres. Site is nine acres, the buildable area, which is the white portion of the site, is only about three and a half acres, or a little bit less than three and a half. So it was a challenge to be able to fit the building on the site, and that was our first task, to see if this site was applicable for a public safety center. Some of the important things about the site, as you can see, it drops off dramatically, it slopes from the north down to the south, and it has the floodplain as shown in gray. The way the site, site plan developed, and some of the reasons and rationale, is that if you remember what the site, what the floodplain was, it had this sweeping arc. So we've maintained that, and taking on historical precedents where buildings were built along a floodplain, they usually followed the floodplain, hence the intimation of that sweeping curve within the building itself. The way it's situated on the site is that public parking is located on the east side, the fire apparatus bay is located on the south, which provides considerable southern light to make sure that the weather doesn't affect it negatively. Volunteer parking is located in this location adjacent to the apparatus bay, and the reason for that is to get the volunteers to park their cars as close to the apparatus bay as possible, and then secure parking for police and dispatch as well. So everything is organized. So, everything is organized to fit that curve of the floodplain. There's a little building down in here that will eventually be a parks building, which will house a replica of a traditional fire truck, as well as some memorabilia, and maybe even serve as a van shell overlooking the wetlands. The way the building is organized, the shared is in this orange-yellowish ochre color. That portion of it is the public lobby, and it includes a training room for police, a shared training room for police and fire. Police administration is in this location, patrol and detectives in this location, and then patrol parking and evidence and all those auxiliary support functions, including the tac team, is located in that gray area, and that's all parking as well. Dispatch was added to the project at the early stages, and then there are some shared functions in here that are represented by fitness rooms, a physical training room, and a break room. This area in here is actually an outdoor courtyard that provides light to the break room, light to the fitness room, and light to the crew area of the fire department. Fire administration is in this location, and this is the representation of the apparatus bay. So, as Alan mentioned, we're at approximately 42,000 square feet total, including the parking, with the ability to add on 4,000 feet in this location, and extend, if necessary, the covered parking and support spaces to the west. The way the building looks, it's dominated by that sweeping form of the representative of the floodplain. The apparatus bay peaks out and provides a glass showcase for the fire trucks, and the entrance to the building is a very dominant feature, with a higher bay, a higher roof than the rest. The roof rises over the public lobby to be about 20 to 24 feet. And public parking is located here. And again, these are conceptual diagrams, but they are generally to scale, and they show what the scope of the project is. A view from the corner, let's say, of 21st and State, you can see the wetlands in here, and the prominence of the building that's up on the site. As we get closer to the building, you can see that these functions are very visible as glass functions. The title of the project, Dickinson Public Safety Center, so that it is visible both during the day and at night. It provides what we call a beacon of safety, because that's what the image of a public safety building ought to be, is that that's where you come for whatever your public safety needs are. The snow scene, and last but not least, we have a little bit of marketing for the police and fire departments. We created a Happy Holidays card. That's the extent of the presentation of the building itself, and if there are any questions, we'll answer them at the end of the presentation.
Hi, I'm Mark Melmer with J.E. Dunn Construction. I'm going to represent the cost estimates for the building on the concept design that Roth, Shepherd, and Schutz Foss did here. As I stated, they started the building around 55,000, 53,000 square feet. The building's been dialed back, and we've been doing cost estimates for them based on current concrete prices in Dickinson, cost per square foot prices that we're seeing in Dickinson, Williston, Minot, Bismarck, utilizing a lot of subcontractors with our real costs, with their real costs, steel ton price, rebar price, curtain wall, glass. So, we have it, we've been utilizing around six contractors per area to dial this in. What we got right now is we got a high-range estimate based on the concept, and we got a low-range estimate based on the concept that I'm going to present. What I have here is the site, a portion of the building that's a pre-engineered building, a portion of the building that's structural steel, and then a few different options, depending on which way you go. The site right now stays the same on the high range and low range, at around 1.8 million. The one-story office building that is the non-pre-engineered building, that's a range of around $254 a square foot at the low range, to $277 a square foot at the high range. The pre-engineered building is $182 a square foot at the low range, and 169, or I'm sorry, 182 at the high range, and 169 at the low range. That drops down to, at the low range, total 11.2 million, and the high range of 12 million. Then you have a construction contingency of low range 561,000, and a high range of Construction total ends up 12,636,000, and the low range, 11,780,000. The difference between the high ranges and the low ranges is just, means it's a concept design. We have a lot of things figured in there of areas where we believe you should have, you know, an upgraded finish would be block interiors, block walls, block corridors. On the low range, we have drywall, steel studs. That front curved wall that they showed, what you have there is that's a split-face masonry on the low range. On the high range, you end up having a corten metal panel, like the rusty metal panel finish. High range, you have an upgraded commercial kitchen in there. In a low range, you have just normal lower-end appliances. They also have that area, the 4,000 square feet, that's the expansion area. That's off the back end of the building. You have structural steel coming off the back, concrete foundations and footings. To eliminate that, we would end up taking about $55,000 off of it. But on the other end, if you ended up doing that, our recommendation would be to go ahead and skin the rest of it. You don't really add any exterior anyways. You'd close that in, you'd put a roof on it, and that would add about 55,000. So, you'd have options. You could essentially do the structure and not enclose it, or increase your cost by 55,000, or just enclose the thing and add another 55,000, $100,000. And again, these are all, these are all concept design that we've been going up and down on. The building's been anywhere from 32,000 square feet, all the way up to 53,000 square feet. So, right now, we're sitting at that 42,000 square foot mark. You guys have any questions for me?
It's probably a question more for the city staff, but at this size of building, I'm assuming it's not being built just to the staffing levels we are today. And, you know, I heard Mr. Rapaz say that, you know, dream out 40 years, but I'm sure we're not designing a building that would accommodate 40 years of growth, too. So, really, how much more growth would we have to have before, say, that 4,000, additional 4,000 square feet would really need to be a reality?
Sean, that'd probably be for you. It's on the police department side, so...
Yeah, President Johnson, the majority of the growth that we'll see in staffing side at this structure will be on the police side. In the fire department, you're more likely to see an additional substation in a separate area of the community constructed. So, I think there's a number, and Al probably has that figure, that we factored in for staffing increases as we move along, as population increases. And surprisingly, it didn't add a whole lot of square footage to the base square footage as we added those in. Now, I can't answer your direct question of when does the 4,000 square feet needed, and maybe Al can do that.
Mr. President, we did plan for this growth up to 2040 with the current 42,000 square feet. And what Mr. Kessel was saying is that the fire department, their growth would be one office for, I believe it was additional inspector, and beyond that, it would be a satellite station and other crew. And there are also, there is also space for four additional sleeping beds within the square footage that we have now, for a total growth of eight beds, or eight staff at this station. And then, the police department, the only growth area there that we really recognized were the sergeant areas, and what we have done is we've upsized some of the gang offices to accommodate those as well. So, the 4,000 square feet of future growth will probably be a long ways off, unless there's a huge growth pattern.
A long ways off.
Okay. Any other questions for us?
Comments, questions here, buddy?
Well, I think my question has been answered, I think. But we've talked a lot about the fire department growing to be a little bit less of a volunteer force, and more a staffed force. Did we anticipate that in this whole project?
Yeah, Commissioner Jackson, we did. The administrative portion of additions that would come would be more in that inspector realm. I think there's one open captain's office that's in this design. But beyond that, the majority of the people that will be adding, as you have just mentioned, are firefighters. And those would be the people that would be located, in the most cases, off-site in additional growth areas of our community, probably one to the east and probably one to the west. So, that's where that increase will happen, is in those satellites or substation facilities.
I think the discussion was, if I remember, our discussion was, for what Commissioner Jackson was saying, was we only anticipate, correct me if I'm wrong, chief, that the sleepover shift is four at any one time? Even though we'd still have more employees, they wouldn't necessarily have to sleep on shift at the station. So, I thought you had a conceptual design of the inside there, where we could actually see these rooms and how they were set up. And that's what I mean. You don't have that with you, do you, Al?
We don't have that this evening, no. We tried to simplify it with the blocks of graphics.
I think next time when you come, if you can bring that and show them, and we can kind of look down and see, here are the bays and so on, it'd be, I think they'd see what we're talking about.
Okay.
Well, just a comment. I certainly liked the design, the appearance of the building. It's going to be a very prominent intersection in our community, and hopefully, that'll help set the tone for any of the private architecture that takes place in that area, too. So, I was pleased with the design. I do have a question, though, since that is a pretty major drainage area. Should we have that 100-year rain event, or maybe even a 500-year rain event? How will the building withstand, say, a large amount of water coming through that site?
Well, Mr. President, first of all, I'd like to thank you for your compliment on the building. We are trying to make this a flagship project to that area of town, and I'm glad that you can see that.
Well, I like that phrase, beacon of safety. I thought that was appropriate.
Now, to answer the question about the 100-year rain, or the 500-year rain, Andrew, maybe you can address that from a standpoint of how it affects our property?
Andrew Schreink with Highlands Engineering and Surveying. The building would actually be located inside the 100-year floodplain. We'll be rerouting a portion of that floodplain that's being impacted by the parking lot a little further to the south. And this site is currently in an unstated area of the city. The base flood elevations have not been established. The gray area you saw on that first map is somewhat conceptual. There hasn't been a formal design done on that. So, as we've gone through, we've done some preliminary calculations, and that area is substantially less than what was shown on that first image there. So, we'll go through, we'll submit what's called a conditional letter of map revision to revise that floodplain boundary, and everything will be located outside of the building. So, the 100-year floodplain will not impact the building at all.
Okay. How about if, like I said, it's a 500-year event?
We could sure analyze that. Current requirements would be to analyze just the 100-year event. We could certainly go above and beyond that, if that's something you guys would like to see as well.
Well, don't go do it just because I asked a question.
Sure.
Other comments or questions?
I just have a question. In the interior brick versus sheet rock, it definitely makes a difference in sound. So, I know it's less expensive to do just the brick or block or whatever you...
Yeah. Commissioner DuKart, there are going to be lots of decisions within, you know, the continuation of this project. All of those decisions will be, you know, discussed and recognized through the staff and the end-users. There certainly are way too many for us to discuss at this point. So, we will evaluate all of those decisions against cost. That's the real benefit of having J.E. Dunn part of the team at this point. And we do recognize that all of those things have different, you know, benefits, cost, and use, so...
Well, my concern is because there's, we're combining this, the safety, you know, with the police and the fire and everything. Noise is always going to be an issue, so I think for the staff to work effectively, especially with dispatch and 911, and, come on, Chief Dasinger, help me out here.
Yeah. And we have, we've had lots of discussions about placeholders for locations within the building relative to the sound and the impact of that. Sound circulation, people walking by offices, how do we separate the public at the lobby? We've had lots of discussions, but we're going to certainly have many more discussions. So, that's a good, very good opinion.
Well, I've been kind of on this project from the beginning. I missed the last meeting, and Commissioner Steiner sat in for me, so I lost the last one. But it's something we need to think about.
Yeah, agreed.
Well, I was also pleased to see that dispatch is in this building. I think that's where it belongs, and that's not so much an architectural thing as a thing between the city here, or with the city. For our commissioners, I believe on our project list, you know, we're carrying this as an $8 million project, if I remember right. And you heard Mr. Melmer tell you that at this point, it's somewheres between 11.8 and 12.6. And my experience in construction is we can already say that it's somewheres between 12 and 13 then. But, so, it's quite a bit higher than the number we were carrying, but I think really from the get-go, we probably have had this project underestimated cost-wise. But, having said that, it means, you know, we will have to try come up with another $4 or $5 million in funding when we look at our total project list. Mr. Kessel?
I would like to address that just briefly. Mayor Johnson, and I want to give credit to Fire Chief Sevic. He had a conversation with Rough Rider Electric, and there may be an opportunity to achieve some very, very low-cost financing for the Public Safety Center. We're going to be making a presentation to their board next week and determine whether or not this project would be eligible, and something that their board would desire to invest in. But that would be 0% dollars for a 10-year term, and up to, you know, a $1.5 million million figure. So there, and we have used grant dollars from oil impact grants to lower that cost to the city, but that was included in the 8 million originally. But, so we are trying to identify other sources of revenue to, to be applied to this project.
So, other than updating us, are we looking for any kind of action today on this?
We'd like to know if this is, if this direction is endorsed by the City Commission. Is, is this a number that we can move forward with? I mean, we will, obviously, it'll vacillate, but it'll be, it'll vacillate within a small window, a window that, that Mr. Melmer has shared with you today. So if that's, unless you tell us differently, that's the road we're going to go down based on the presentation that was made this evening.
Does anybody have concerns that this may be going the wrong direction?
Well, I guess my concern would be to make sure that we're building it big enough. Sounds like we are. And I assume that you and Chief Seabok and Chief Dasinger are really looking at that. But this needs to work for a while.
If I may, Commissioner Jackson, I, I agree. And it's not an easy decision to build a structure that will accommodate 40 years' worth of growth and to know what that 40 years, years' worth of growth is going to be. I think, and I don't want to put words in, in either of our chiefs' mouths, but they've been part of this process from the beginning. They've had additional staff members part of this process as we've moved on. And I think we've achieved consensus that this structure with the flexible growth areas is probably the right number in terms of square footage for a, for a very long time in the city. But I do appreciate that concern.
I guess if, if the project is, if the documents are ready in April and I would assume, like you said, that you might be able to start sooner on civil work and maybe some of the foundation work. From a building schedule, what's the best guess on when the building would be done?
Our best guess right now is approximately 10 to 12 months. So it would be ready early spring 2015.
Okay.
And we did have some discussions with your engineering personnel here, and that will, the improvements north of 21st on State would pretty much parallel that same schedule and likely be completed prior to that. So there'll be a lot going on out there next summer, so...
Mr. President, Ellen, can you talk a little bit about the building structure in the southeast corner there where we're, we're thinking, discussion with Parks and Rec? Have you actually talked to them about that, their facility, or?
Okay. Yeah, I can address that, Commissioner Steiner. Mr. Kessel had, I guess, encouraged us to take a look at that corner. First of all, we looked at the buildable area within there, and I believe it's around 9,000 square feet. One of the, one of the things that we've been asked to do is to try and incorporate the wetlands in with some kind of a community parks plan and extend that parks plan through the site and up through to the west and the northwest. There is an old antique fire truck that Mr. Porter has that I've been told that we can do something with. And we first talked about it being within the lobby of the Public Safety Center. The more we talked about it, we thought maybe it would be nice to create this little icon on the corner that would be kind of a gateway north of 21st onto this property. It could reflect some of the architectural parts to the building. It could incorporate flags, rest stop. Mr. Roth had mentioned perhaps even a ban shelf or some tables and even maybe an extension of bike path. So it's kind of a unique little corner that's a standalone that we have some opportunities to do some nice things with. And I think if you can imagine coming off of 21st, driving on State and envisioning the building sitting out there with this plain of, of grass and a green foreground, it'd be fairly dramatic and to have a little kiosk in the corner, so...
I think part of the discussion wasn't how we came upon this here, was when it was talked about having the fire, fire station in a different part of town, that the Parks and Rec could make a theme park next to it. Well, we just carried that out there, that maybe the Parks and Rec would want to do this corner as kind of a theme, theme park for, for the fire department and safety department and so on. I know they get a lot of tours at the public safety facilities, fire department and so on. The ban shelf area, you know, we aren't talking about a large one if it would be a ban shelf, but whatever, an area where they can take the students down to after they have their tours, you know, and, and put on programs for them down there maybe, or that's where they finish up eating for the day, for the lunch, or that type of thing. But that's kind of the idea that's floating out there. And I think it'd be a great complement to that whole site plan there. Was that included in the cost estimates that J.E. Dunn gave us?
That's not been included.
We're actually, gonna talk to the president of the Park District. He just doesn't know it yet.
We have the police or the, the fire truck, I believe, agreed upon to put in there. I told the police department they should go find the Batmobile and put that in there. But I don't know if Mr. Dasinger can get it or not, so...
You know, I...
Mr. Jackson, go ahead.
I guess I'll say it now, and we've got a, a building that is going to be 12-man plus probably. I'd like to know what these costs are when we get to that point for this, this little appurtenance here. Very nice, but we're spending a lot of money.
You know how, you know how it works when Mr. Steiner talks to the president of the Parks and Recreation about a project, and then, then he calls me and talks to me about how the city can help him fund it. So, right?
But we talk.
Yes, we talk. But we'll, we'll cross that bridge at another time. So I guess we're just informally looking for feedback here. Are they on the right path? Should we urge them to go ahead, go further with this?
I think otherwise, fine.
Yeah.
Okay, we're good to go.
Okay. Thanks for your support. We appreciate that.
Thank you for being here, all of you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're staying on the timetable agenda. We're a little bit behind. At 5:30, we have a public hearing. And Mr. Coling, are you introducing this item?
Yes, Mr. President. The item on your agenda is for the transfer of a location of a on-off sale liquor license. This is a license that is owned by Scott Wax, doing business as Frontier Liquor. Previously, the business was located on South Main. They left that location, and that location was remodeled into, I believe, a housing unit. And Mr. Wax and Frontier Liquor are asking for permission to locate their license and transfer their licensed location at 22 South State Avenue. This application was received by the city in late October. We have advertised for public comment on that. I'm not aware that any public comment has been received by the city. And in light of the application and the lack of objection by the public, city staff would recommend the adoption of this resolution to transfer the liquor license. For your reference, this would be Resolution 53-2013. We'd be happy to take any questions, Mr. President.
Did you say 53?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. But it is a public hearing, that's correct?
Correct.
So at this time, we declare the public hearing open. Anyone wishing to comment regarding this liquor license location transfer may do so now. Just come to the podium, state your name, and we'll hear your comments. Anyone from the public? There's no one from the public that wishes to comment, so we'll declare the public hearing closed. And Mr. Coling, was there a resolution in our electronic packet?
There is a resolution in the, in the packet, yes. I believe there are two attachments to this item. One was the application that was submitted by the license holder, and the other attachment was the resolution itself.
Okay. So you have the resolution in your packet. Any comments or questions about this one?
Have we done a review of this proposed facility for the ingress egress off of State's Avenue?
Mr. President, Commissioner Jackson, yes. This proposed transfer was submitted to the police department and the fire department, and they did have a chance to walk through there and provide their comments. And at this point, city staff do recommend approval of the license transfer.
I guess specifically, I'm wondering if it, if it fits the DOT's plans for the reconstruction of State's Avenue?
Mr. Jackson, we have not submitted these, these plans to the DOT. My understanding of the DOT process or where they're at in their design process is that the, the exact configuration of that corner has not been determined yet. So it's difficult to either approve or reject an application based on what the DOT may do in the future.
Mr. Coling, is that the Pizza Hut delivery building?
Yes. Commissioner Du卡特, it would be a portion of that building is where they're at.
Do we have anything in our regulations as far as a liquor establishment as proximity to a church? Are they within the distance needed for that?
We do, Commissioner Olman's. The ordinance requires that a liquor establishment would have to be at least 300 feet away from any church or school. The distance is measured basically from front door to front door based upon the ordinary means of travel, ordinary method of travel. And as that was, was diagrammed out, it, this location ends up being about 340 feet away from the front door of the, the church.
Other comments or questions?
Well, I guess I would just echo Mr. Jackson's concern. You know, we've seen some other businesses that were established along where the, the overpass is going to be. And, you know, at the time that they were approved, they're going to be impacted. You know, the medicine shop with their drive-up will probably not be something any longer. So as long as the owners know that there's still some fluctuation with the way the traffic's going to flow, they have to be comfortable with the unknown moving forward. I don't have a problem with the location, just making them aware moving forward. The dynamics of their, their entrance and egress could change.
Yeah, it's an existing building. They're not making an addition to it. So the building is going to be impacted kind of regardless. But, yeah, it is a good point that there, there are still some things that the North Dakota DOT hasn't settled. And I think it was one or two meetings ago, we, we heard some of that discussion from concerned citizens, so...
Well, you know, I don't know how it should affect this decision, but if I understand this drawing right, this, this won't be happening with the reconstruction of State's Avenue. There's not going to be an access point here for a drive-through. So I, you know, whether that affects a, I don't have a problem with the location of the liquor store. But I think we should make it clear we're not approving any particular access or anything like that. Would be my thought.
Commissioner Jackson, I think right now we're not proposing to revise any of the access. And when the DOT, through their railroad separation, grade separation project comes through with any right-of-way negotiations that they might have with those businesses, they still need to provide that building and access. And I think at that time, they, they do have some options on the table that will provide access, but maybe on a different location, probably coming out on West Villard.
Okay.
Commissioner Jackson, there is an existing access to this building from Highway 10, from West Villard.
I understand, yeah.
Yeah, I would just echo that, you know, when you're looking at the drive-through diagram, that may not be a possibility. Things like that would line up almost across the street from the medicine shop's drive-in. And that one, we already know is not going to be, no matter which scenario they showed us, that was not going to be, the, the grade was going to be too steep at that point.
Yes, Commissioner, I believe that drive-through services the Pizza Hut delivery portion of the, the building and is not, it's not a drive-in for the liquor store.
Okay.
Mr. President, I do have one other question here. The 342 you stated is from front, from door, front doorstep to front doorstep. Is that what the code says, from front door to front door? The buildings are closer than that?
It does. It, the way the code reads, it's by the ordinary means of travel between the buildings. So our interpretation of that was that when you leave one building and go to the other, that's the, the ordinary means of travel, and that's the way that it was measured.
Other questions or comments? Well, we have a resolution. It is Resolution 53-2013 or 2013. Are there any motions regarding the, that resolution?
Move to approve, Mr. President.
Second.
We have the motion and the second. Do you have further discussion? Hearing done, we'll vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mrs. Du卡特?
Aye.
Mr. Olman's?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. The motion carries. We have one more item on the timetable agenda. This has to do with a multi-county, multi-county, multi-hazard mitigation plan. Mr. Gene Burish is here to present that. Mr. Kessel, is there anything you want to add by way of introduction?
Thank you, President Johnson. Mr. Bersh is with Roosevelt Custer. They have concluded a, a great deal of, of time and effort putting into a approximately 400-page document, I believe, that is the multi-county, multi-hazard mitigation plan. I'm sure Mr. Bersh will discuss the impacts of this plan and the federal funding that is associated with its adoption.
Yes, Mr. President, Commissioners. About three years ago, we started working on this plan. It was a three-county plan. And about a year and a half ago, Stark County opted in on the plan, made it a four-county, multi-hazard, multi-jurisdiction plan. And of course, along with Stark County came the six incorporated cities in the county, including the city of Dickinson. The plan as proposed has been sent to the regional office of FEMA in Denver for approval. Assuming it's approved, it will then be the plan for the four-county region. It's a mitigation plan. It, it deals with proposed activities to hopefully lessen the effects of 11 hazards, seven natural hazards, five man-made hazards, which can cause serious damage both to individuals and to property. A good example would be the tornado that went through Dickinson a number of years ago. With that tornado, at the time, the city of Dickinson and Stark County did not have an approved plan. Now, the city and individuals qualified for disaster relief through FEMA. But the difference with this plan and disaster relief is that in order to qualify for mitigation grant funding through FEMA or for projects to lessen the effects of these hazards, you have to have an approved plan and you have to have adopted an approved plan. An example of the effect of that is last year, Adams County put in a grant request for about $300,000 of siren equipment and generators. The grant was approved, but the county did not qualify because they did not have an approved plan. And so the grant was decommissioned. Had they had the approved plan, they would have gotten the, the sources or the resources to purchase those properties. The plan itself is 378 pages. About 80 of that is... About 80 of that is mapping. There's four sections to the plan. The first is an introductory section, which explains who was involved in the preparation of the plan and how it was done. The second is a definition section and contains historical documentation and anecdotal documentation of the 11 hazards. The third is a vulnerability or risk assessment portion in which there are suggested activities for each of the communities and the counties in the, for the mitigation activities. And the fourth is a maintenance portion of the plan, which outlines what must be done on an annual basis to maintain the plan. Now, there's no cost to the city of Dickinson for the preparation of the plan. That was taken care of with grant money from FEMA, from the North Dakota Department of Emergency Services, and each of the four counties has a small match obligation. So the city of Dickinson has no responsibility. There are suggested activities for mitigating damages, as an example for flooding, winter, summer storms and things of that sort for the city. Some carry no expense, some do have expense, but they're not. They're optional, they're recommended, and if the city would choose to carry out any mitigation activity with an expense obligation, that would be a budget item that you would have to budget like you do with any other matter for the city. Once it's adopted or approved, the responsibility for Stark County and the six communities within Stark County under the mitigation plan will be with the county emergency manager, that'll be Bill Folsen. And the only thing it requires is one annual meeting to review the plan, to determine whether it should be amended and to assess what has been accomplished and what hasn't been accomplished. It's a five-year plan, so if you adopt it, you would be covered for five years. The other five communities in the county have signed on, and I'm here today to ask that you do also. It would benefit the city in that you would then qualify for mitigation funding, assuming there's any, any money available.
Questions?
Has anybody on the city staff reviewed or participated in, reviewed this plan or participated in the planning process?
We provided a copy to the city. I don't know that they went through the 370 some odd pages. We do, there was, there was a county committee which was involved in the preparation of the plan. It's the LEPC committee for the county. It does include members from law enforcement and the fire department. I, I must confess, though, that the meetings were not well-attended. This started out as a county plan when Brent Pringle was the emergency manager. Prior to that, Gary Costelack, he went through three or four different versions, were submitted to the state and rejected. And so hopefully, we're looking at approval. The state approved it. It's at FEMA now in Denver. We're also looking at a December 31 deadline. That's the grant deadline and we would appreciate it if you would consider it and adopt it. We also had public hearings, notification for public hearings, those also were not well-attended. We asked for public comment, we received none.
Mr. Coling, is there a resolution again in our electronic packet?
Mr. President, there's not a resolution in your electronic packet. We did have some conversation with Chief Dossinger about this. It is a rather large plan and I think city staff would appreciate maybe another two weeks to go through the plan, to review it, to make any comments that we might have on it prior to adoption. I imagine that the plan is, is, we will recommend approval as the plan has been submitted, but we would appreciate a couple of extra weeks to look through the document.
That won't be a problem as long as we would get an answer before the end of the year.
Okay. Mr. Coling, I think that's a reasonable request and a prudent thing to do. Mr. Seavock, you have some comments you'd like to make?
President Johnson, Commissioners, through the local emergency planning committee process, the Dickinson Fire Department, over the last couple of years, the timeframe that Mr. Burish has stated, we have provided the required information that has been gathered. Dickinson Police Department was asked for the same information. We, we are aware of the plan, we are aware of the work that was being done on it. We aren't familiar with the final draft, however, so if we could have just some time to look at that, I don't think there's, there is going to be any reason to ask that approval not be granted either, but we just haven't had a chance to see that final document. We have, in fact, been a part of it being put together, however, through the LEPC concept.
Thank you, Chief. Any objections by the commission to continuing this to the next agenda for adoption consideration? Okay, we'll do that, Mr. Burish. Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Okay, we're back to tab four, item C, human resource ordinance revision. And Mr. Coling?
Thank you, Mr. President, Commissioners. The document I have before you is an ordinance that makes several changes to our human resources code. As you are aware, our human resources manual is enacted into city code, so changes to the manual do require an ordinance before this body with two readings and final passage. There are five basic changes that this ordinance makes to our human resources manual. First, it allows employees to use vacation and sick leave that they have accrued as they accrue it upon hire. Currently in ordinance, there's a six-month waiting period before employees may use accrued sick leave or vacation leave. And adoption of this ordinance would eliminate that requirement or that waiting period. This ordinance also eliminates compensation time as a city benefit. Those employees that have accrued, compensation time would be paid out, those hours that they have accrued, but compensation time would not be paid in the future. In the future, as this ordinance is adopted, any employees working over 40 hours within a week would receive overtime pay as is mandated by federal law, but compensation time would not be paid for hours worked over 40 in a week. Third, this ordinance clarifies the shift differential pay that is made to employees. Currently, our ordinance states that shift differential pay of a dollar per hour is granted to employees when they work between the hours of 6:00 PM and 6:00 AM, the overnight shift. As we look back at how that shift differential was adopted, it was really intended for those departments that are doing a 24-hour shift, such as our police department, our dispatchers, they work around the clock. They don't have the option of adjusting their shift to not work those hours and that is why shift differential pay was adopted originally. So this ordinance would clarify that, that the shift differential pay is only available for those certain departments that are working that 24-hour, 365 shift. Fourth, this ordinance increases the vacation accrual for employees in their first year of employment. Currently, employees during their first year accrue five days of vacation per year. This ordinance would increase that to 12 days of vacation per year, which is consistent with the accrual that employees receive from their second through their fifth year of employment with the city. And fifth, this ordinance makes some technical changes to the city's FMLA policy or Family and Medical Leave policy. There were some changes made at the federal level with respect to FMLA, specifically as it pertained to the uniform services. If you are a caregiver to a military service member who is returning from service, under federal law, you are now eligible for Family Medical Leave Act benefits. And this ordinance would incorporate some of those changes into our city code, as well as making some other changes that have occurred within FMLA as it has been interpreted in the courts. We did present these proposed changes to city staff. We held two employee meetings to explain those changes to city staff and take any questions that they had. We also did present this ordinance to the Civil Service Commission and received approval, recommendation from the Civil Service Commission to adopt this ordinance and would recommend to the city commission that you would adopt first reading of this ordinance for your record-keeping. Excuse me. This will be ordinance 1533, and I'd be happy to take any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Coling. Are there any comments or questions for Mr. Coling? If not at this time, is there anyone from the public that would like to comment regarding ordinance 1533? If so, you may do so now. Just come to the podium, state your name, and we'll hear your comments. Is no one from the public that wishes to comment? Any comments or questions by city commissioners? Not? Is there a motion regarding first reading of 1533?
Move to approve, Mr. President.
We have the motion and the second. Any discussion? Hearing none, then we'll vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mrs. Dukard?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Olmans?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. So the motion carries. The next item is a proclamation regarding a former city commissioner, a longtime city commissioner, Gene Genru, who recently passed away. Mr. Kessel, are you making this introduction?
I certainly am. President Johnson, you've stated most of it. I was contacted by Mr. Jeff Genru, Gene's son, and informed of Mr. Genru's unfortunate and recent passing. As you've stated, Mr. Genru was a city commissioner from 1986 to the year 2000. He was well-known for championing causes like the West River Community Center.
Are you, why don't you just read?
Oh, we can certainly do that.
Read the proclamation, yes.
Let me go back. You got it? Okay. Resolution proclaiming November 18th, 2013, as Gene Genru Day in the city of Dickinson. Whereas, the Board of City Commissioners of the city of Dickinson notes the passing of Gene Genru on Sunday, November 3rd, 2013. And whereas, Gene Genru was former resident and longtime city commissioner of the city of Dickinson, serving as a city commissioner from 1986 through 2000. And whereas, Gene Genru had a deep concern for developing a long-range plan to improve the quality of life for citizens in Dickinson, working to improve the financial stability of the city and believing that the city would ultimately prosper by attracting businesses and younger families if the property tax burden could be lowered and if the city could invest in improvements in infrastructure that were geared toward family-oriented recreation. And whereas, Gene Genru's leadership on the Board of City Commissioners was noted in the Dickinson Press editorial board endorsing his election as follows. Gene was well-known as an 11-year commissioner, experienced through the leanest years in city history to the fruits of the resurging oil. The resurgence in Dickinson is in no small measure, only possible through Genru's efforts. Genru spearheaded the drive to pass home rule and the subsequent city sales tax. This initial tax was dedicated solely to the reduction of city debt, and without this tax, it is quite possible the city would have been literally bankrupt. And whereas, during Gene Genru's term of office, the city successfully reduced its debt by nearly $23 million, with much of the debt reduction being achieved by application of the proceeds of the city sales tax to debt reduction. And whereas, Gene Genru's proudest legacy was the home rule and city sales tax, which created the financial ability for the city of Dickinson to invest in projects such as the West River Community Center, a dream of his, which was realized in 2004. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Board of City Commissioners of the city of Dickinson, North Dakota, as follows. The Board of City Commissioners of the city of Dickinson hereby proclaims today, November 18th, 2013, as Gene Genru Day in the city of Dickinson and expresses its thanks to the Genru family for all of Gene Genru's many contributions to the city of Dickinson and southwestern North Dakota, dated this 18th day of November, 2013.
Thank you, Mr. Kessel. This is a, a resolution, so I'm assuming it's Resolution 54?
Yes, that's correct, Mr. President.
So it's 54-2013. Would there be a motion regarding this resolution? We have the motion to approve and the second. Any comments that Commissioners would like to make regarding this proclamation?
You know, I had a chance personally for a number of the years that Gene was a commissioner to work with him and it is very much true. He was very, very dedicated to this city. It meant a lot to him. So I think this is very important.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. Mr. Kessel?
I should also mention that Mr. Genru's family would like to consider a donation to, to create a remembrance of Mr. Genru somewhere in the community. That discussion is ongoing, but he was a very patriotic fellow, so they're thinking of a flag of some kind. We haven't located that yet, but I just wanted the commission to know that, that we could see a, a visual reminder of his dedication to the community in the near future.
Any other comments? Well, I think we'll go ahead and vote then. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mrs. Dukard?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Olmans?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. So the motion carries. I assume we will be sending to the family a signed original of the proclamation?
That is correct, President Johnson.
Okay, well, Mr. Kessel, we'll, we'll move to reports and let you give your reports.
Thank you very much. Stark County has made a decision, or will shortly, or is likely to make a decision to end the need for building inspection services that the city of Dickinson currently provides in the unincorporated areas of Stark County. We've had a longstanding joint powers agreement between us, the two entities that have allowed the city of Dickinson to provide those building inspections in those unincorporated areas. If they do move forward with the creation of a building department, which they are likely to do, it therefore renders those services moot. Details are still being worked out and we still hope to maintain the building inspection rights within the extraterritorial zoning area. They have a meeting on July, or excuse me, November 19th, where they'll discuss this very item further and make a recommendation that'll go, I believe, to the county commission. Once that recommendation has been made by their planning and zoning board, we'll bring back to this body a formal request to end the JPA. They have a 90-day requirement to inform us of the notification to end that trade-powers agreement, and they've asked us to waive that 90-day period in order to create the department in a more hastily achieved manner than that. We'll continue to discuss this matter with, with Stark Development, or excuse me, Stark County. As a, a staff, we have discussed it. They are not upset with the type of service they've been provided, either the quality or the timeliness of that. It's simply a recognition that things have changed in Stark County and they want to create their own building department. So unless the, this is simply a report, no action is required unless you would like to see the 90-day stipulation be adhered to. If not, then we don't, I don't think we have any issues.
Any concerns?
No.
Okay.
I think we're good.
Excellent. The HR Hiring Journal today will be provided by HR Coordinator Namanak. And then if I, if I could, the State Water Commission is meeting in Dickinson as, at this time, and it is, they're creating a policy that I think the city of Dickinson should at least be aware of and have maybe some input to. So if it's okay with the commission, I'd like to relieve myself of the meeting and attend that one as soon as Ms. Namanak is complete.
Okay.
Good evening, President Johnson, Commissioners. I have the November Hiring Journal. It looks a little shorter than usual, which is kind of nice. A street maintenance operator, we had four and a half, four full-time, one part-time positions open, and we did fill two of those positions. Fortunately or unfortunately, one of them was an internal candidate, so that opened another position for us, code enforcement officer. And that position, since we opened it, we just went through the interview process on that and are just ready to make an that and are just ready to make an offer on that. Police officer position, we had three openings in September for that position. Went through the whole process, an offer was made, and no hire came out of that. So we reopened, and we are now at the second interview phase of that position. Library director, we did go through two interviews for that, and an offer has been made on that. We are waiting to hear back on that. Records clerk position for the police department, we did, were successful in filling that position recently. Sanitation supervisor has been a difficult position for us. We have opened it a couple times. We had three applicants. All three of them were not qualified, so we did not interview, and we are going to hold off a bit and have some discussion on how we move forward with this position. Senior patrol position was opened with, internally with the police department, and that was filled by Matthew Hanson just recently. And we had a part-time deputy clerk of court position open again, and that position was just filled as well. And that's everything. If there's any questions?
Is there any questions or comments for the HR Director? Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
And Mr. Kessel, you're excused. So, public safety, no reports. Engineering, Mr. Kubus.
President Johnson, Commission, a couple of things from the engineering department today. We visited last meeting about standards for construction, and today we have a draft of an ordinance for a first reading in front of you. City staff has been reviewing the construction standards that include construction standard drawings and technical specifications for the basic items that we install in our public right-of-ways, water, sewer, streets, and storm sewer. Our plan for the rollout of this, and Mr. Coling can maybe talk more about the timeframe for the readings, but I believe we would have a first reading, a second reading, a public hearing, and maybe all that can happen at the next meeting, so we could have this adopted in December with rollout happening the 1st of January this year. The one thing we do have planned for this, for the construction standards, is to have a semi-public meeting inviting the interested parties of contractors, developers, and consulting engineers sometime in mid-December to bring them in, bring them up to speed with the standards that we are adopting, and answer any questions that they might have about the implementation of those standards. With that, I view, open any questions on the construction standards?
Any comments, questions?
I read through the ordinance, and I don't remember, did we leave ourselves enough wiggle room to make updates and revisions and all of that?
Mr. Jackson, perhaps I can address that. In the ordinance does provide that for changes to the standards or standard drawings, that those would be reported to the Board of Commissioners as they are made, but it does allow the city engineer or designate of the city administrator to make those changes so long as they are reported to the Board.
Okay.
So all the standards and stuff aren't in the ordinance themselves? They're a separate document?
Correct.
And President Johnson, if I can address that, this is the binder that does contain the standard specifications, so it's a fairly lengthy document. There's another binder that has the standard drawings on it, and what we would do is, if you adopt this ordinance, is adopt those standards and specifications and drawings by reference, so that we would not have to incorporate this entire binder into our city code, but it would be available for public inspection and any information the public would want from that.
Mr. Jackson, is that something you've looked at?
I have not. I don't think I need to either.
Okay. Why not? Maybe the other four of us could direct you to do that on our behalf.
You could try.
We could try. Mr. Coling, is this ordinance 1534?
That's correct.
If there's someone from the public that would like to comment on 1534, you may do so now. Just come to the podium, state your name, and we'd hear your comments. There's no one from the public that would comment. Is there any comments by City Commissioners?
You know, I would just say this has been needed for a long time. I can't imagine with those two documents that everything in there is the way it's going to be a year from now. I can't imagine it will be. We'll be making some changes and all, but it's just so important that we have this. So we need to do it.
Other comments? Is there a motion regarding 1534, its first reading?
I'll make a motion to approve the first reading of ordinance number 1534.
I'll second.
We have the motion, the second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mrs. Stuckard?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. May continue, Mr. Kubus.
Thank you, President Johnson. Just wanted to give you a quick update on some of the projects that we've either been working on directly or indirectly through the engineering office. Some of the projects that we've had ongoing that are built in the city right now, again talking about water, sewer, and street projects, that the city is working towards acceptance of those projects, and we're working with the developers and contractors on some repairs to some of those projects before we accept them, but just quickly would run through the list. There's State's 7th and 8th Edition, the Fisher's Eastside 2nd Edition, the KLD Edition, North Industries, Southview Homes, Westridge 1st Edition, Sundance Coves, Cook Middle Hills, and Affrontage Road in the Martin 1st subdivision. A few of these projects, we went out with city staff and with Public Works, went out, did a final inspection and a walk-through, sometimes with the owner, sometimes just with city staff, made a punch-list item, and really trying to formalize the process of the city accepting these projects. So our staff is on board with the infrastructure that we're accepting. We've also done some site reviews on smaller sites, commercial and industrial sites, about a half dozen of those, again, trying to accept those projects, going through some of the comments generally related to stormwater, and I think we're working towards accepting those projects, and again, formalizing the process of how the city is accepting those. Again, this is on private property, but we're still interested in how they're tying into our city system, whether that's with accesses, with water, sewer services, or how their stormwater is discharging into our system. Been a little lull in some of the new development projects, but we do have several of them on the docket coming up that I've been working with Community Development Director Cortan. Some of those quickly are the Westridge 2nd Edition, Dickinson Hills, Pinecrest Riverfront Estates, Northern Meadow Hills, Woodhaven, Clear Creek, the Lamont subdivision, and the Come and Go subdivision. I'm probably missing some, but there are several on the docket, and I think most of these looking to move forward in 2014. Some of these are smaller subdivisions, and some of them are quite substantial. So 2014, I think, would be quite a busy year compared to 2013 with some of these subdivisions. We are working on, as KLJ, as the city engineer, some recommendations. Within the next three or so weeks, we'll have recommendations that we'll take forward to city staff, and some ongoing discussion through December, hope to implement some of those recommendations, and just to recommend some streamlined processes for the engineering department, how we can shorten our timeframes, getting back to developers on some of their applications to the city and things like that. One issue you had, or got brought up to all of us last week, was the intersection near South State Avenue. We'll have some cost estimates for options for improving that condition at the December meeting, but just wanted to let you know that we're still looking at that. Some of those options would involve signing, potentially putting guardrail out there, some sort of a wall to abate noise and vehicles, and another option that was brought up was landscaping. So we'll have four options for your consideration at the next meeting. Not a whole lot else going on in the engineering department, but we're staying really busy. One other thing I'd like to mention was some of the North Dakota DOT projects. We talked briefly about the railroad separation in relation to the liquor store. There were three questions that the DOT had asked, and very briefly, I think they're pretty standard questions, but they talked about a barrier-separated pedestrian walkway, which is similar to what we have at Highway 22, where there's an actual concrete barrier between the pedestrian traffic and the vehicles. And that, along with a full canopy, is something I think that the city would be in favor of. We talked last week, or at the last meeting, about some new options that got brought to the table from the department, and with those new options, the DOT will have another layer of public involvement with some directly affected property owners on that. So there'll be some ongoing meetings in the next couple months on that railroad separation project. And the interim bypass project is going to be winding down here with the onset of some colder weather. We'll have some ongoing meetings with the DOT about winter maintenance and how that project, where it's going to stop this winter. The DOT, along with the contractor, will handle the winter maintenance, so that won't be a function of our Public Works Department for this winter. With that, that concludes my report on the engineering department.
Thank you, Mr. Kubus. Are there any questions or comments for the city engineer?
Just a comment, and this is regarding the infrastructures and so on. Did we approve the contract that provide the two-year bonding for the streets? Two-year maintenance bond?
No, we didn't.
Developments?
Commissioner Steiner, no. Right now, we're following state law, which is a one-year warranty period on that construction.
And now, is that just specifically for the streets, or does it include sewer and water and so on?
It would apply to any public infrastructure that becomes the city's, and that's a part of the process that we are trying to really formalize. Sometimes, in the busyness of it all, that one-year warranty period can come and go, and if there are issues, sometimes it's not being looked at. So in our acceptance of these projects, we want to make it clear to the contractor or the developer that in nine months or so, if we're accepting it at this time of the year, in nine months or so, we'll be doing another review, a maintenance or warranty period review, and which would allow them, three or so months, to make any necessary repairs. And at that point, we would close out the project from our end, and it just becomes city infrastructure then.
And the reason I bring this up is, this last weekend, I drove to the newer part of State Edition and so on, and some of those concrete streets are just cracked and depressed, and they can't be more than two years old. And now, you look at it, and cities are going to be highly responsible for bringing those up, maintaining them, and I just look at it, and it's just, you know, something wasn't packed, how thick is the concrete poured? I mean, I think, you know what I'm talking about, some of the places over there. I think we need to address this here, and I don't know how we do it, if we make the bond longer or whatever, but in this case, there's, I don't know, hundreds of thousands of dollars of work that's got to be done over there on the streets because of insufficient, whatever it might be. So I think we need to take a look at this.
Well, and we can look at, I know it's been discussed, about a longer warranty period or some bonding money, but as of right now, I don't know that anything's been changed in ordinance.
You hate to put a lot on the contractors, but in a way, there's no reason why the taxpayer should pay for something that's a year and six months old when really it shouldn't happen for five to 10 years down the road. If we could look into that.
Okay.
Other comments for the engineer? All right, we'll move to Tab 7, Public Works. Mr. Zero?
President Johnson, Commission, I have just a couple slides to show on our proposed option of staffing the MS-4 that was brought up by Mr. Erickson tonight. First of all, I'd like to thank Brent for doing and being part of this audit. It was a surprise for everybody at the city, and we asked him to come in and help us out with the audit and how we can, I guess, satisfy the Department of Health requirements. I just had to show a picture of our facility. I'm hopefully bringing in all the staff by June of next year. The Public Works Department is comprised of three divisions, the solid waste division, water utility, and street fleet. We added fleet to the street division, and hopefully in the next year or so, we'll have fleets organized and be able to do the maintenance of all equipment through the new Public Works facility. Plan staff for 2014. You can see solid waste division. We've increased with all the routes and the increased solid waste, water utility division, and the street fleet division, but as Human Resource Director Namanuk said, we're still down, I think, a couple in street and one or two in solid waste. Currently, that's the Public Works Division layout. On the left, solid waste. Middle is water utilities, and street and fleet on the right. The color coatings are how it was laid out. The green is 2015. The other two are 2013 and proposed 2014. In the water utility division, you see the wastewater, that's all the new for 2014. That's part of the new wastewater or water reclamation facility and the staff that'll be required out there. So with the MS-4, we of course assumed it would go under water utility, and so we're looking at this portion of the department to how we can staff and do the municipal stormwater. So this is our current water utility. On the way to the right, you see the chief operator, industrial wastewater and storm. That is a fairly new position for industrial and stormwater maintenance, but it did not include the MS-4. So we are working with HR now and adding some revisions to the job description for the chief operator industrial to include some of the MS-4 requirements. And we talked about it with Mr. Bresnan and the manager on, I don't know if delete should be the word, but maybe moving. With the Public Works Department, I'd like to get where maybe there's other operators and seniors that can multitask in different areas. Of course, we can't do anything, everything, but that we can switch them around as needed with our staff. So I'm looking at moving that person under chief industrial wastewater and storm, and including the MS-4 outreach and that with that position. And the reason I'm looking at making it a senior is because they're going to be public outreach, dealing with the public. I think it's definitely more than a standard operator position, and so we would look at the senior having the MS-4 coordinator work under the chief operator under the industrial wastewater and storm. And like Mr. Erickson said, the MS-4 coordinator would be responsible for these, you know, updating the program, revising the municipal facility in the SWIP, implementing the stormwater management plan, including documentation of the BMPs and goals, and coordinating with staff, and reporting, and submitting the annual report. One of the things we're behind, because, I guess, because we're three years behind this first six months, 12 months, it's going to be a lot of work to catch up. And after that, we're thinking that this position, you know, it won't spend as much time in MS-4, then that senior can also then help the other portions of that division in other operations in water utility. So that's what we came up quick, and that's what we're looking at. In fact, in some of that position now, they've already identified. that position now, they've already identified the outfalls and preparing the, going through the annual report as we speak.
Any questions or comments for Mr. Zurov regarding his intentions there with staffing Well, perhaps that second meeting in January, you can give us an update on how things are going and if you're going to meet the state deadline then.
Yeah, and I guess I would want to, if you approve that recommendation, how we're staffed, I'll move forward with that.
Are you asking, does that take an approval?
I guess not right now.
Yeah, I think, I actually, I'm suspecting that you guys can do that administratively.
Yes.
So if there's a job description change, I think that eventually comes to us, but...
That wouldn't be my comment. Eventually, there'll be a job description that we'll bring before you, but until then, I don't think there's any action that's required.
I think we're all supportive of, you know, getting MS-4 compliant here. So you have some project updates?
Yes, I'm going to go to the podium. I've got a map, so it's a little easier to see.
Sure.
Now, sometimes when we start talking projects, it's, they all blend together. And even with staff, we start talking, and between development municipal projects, it's very hard to keep them separate. First of all, I'm going to talk about some of the sanitary sewer project updates, and then Loretta Marshak with Engineering is going to bring us up to date on some of the water distribution CIP projects. And it's going to be quick. I just wanted to kind of show everybody where we're at with, or as far as completion. The water reclamation facility, of course, everybody's aware of. As of middle of November, we're 65 percent, oh, excuse me, we're 60% complete in the water reclamation facility. We're still looking at opening first part of May to get ready, because that's going to take some time for biological activity to get into place in preparation for everything in the fall. The, am I pointing to the right place? Yeah, I am. Public Works Facility, that is currently at 65% complete, and the animal shelter is 75% complete. There's going to be some winter shutdown on that. There can be some interior work in the Public Works Facility. The animal shelter is not going to have much worked on till spring, but it's coming together nicely. The water reclamation inflow pump station is under construction, and that's 15% complete. That includes a force main to the water reclamation facility. The West Pump Station and Force Main is planning to bid soon. That will include this lift station and all the piping down to the new inflow pump station. We are, let's see, on the West Pump Station, I'm meeting with the county tomorrow regarding property acquisition there for that. And I believe Mike Burke with Apex has been working with Matt on pending easements, and we're anxious to get that bid out as soon as possible. The West Gravity Sewer, which is from here up to the interstate, that's getting ready to bid soon by, before the end of the year. Lift Station 12, upgrade. That's this project here. They've been working on possible, currently, it shows this line going from the lift station down across the interstate to this point here. We have one more option. We're working with DOT and federal highways. If we can bring that line down here, parallel the interstate, go this direction, we can, it'd be about a savings of $1 million. And that's worth pursuing, and so that's why we're pursuing it, to try to get that done.
I pointed the lift station 12 again.
Right, there.
And like the commissioners, we were talking about the water backup, sewer backup tonight earlier. That's probably 80% of our problem with that one right there.
With that project, of course, this development here is putting in sewer, and of course, that has to be done to tie into state, street, of course, for the new public safety center. But all that is in the works. And hopefully, we'll get all that resolved soon. Been working on the, how the city's going to develop this GATA system now that we have all this, we're going to have all these new lift stations. We're going to have a new lift station and line to the DPR facility all the way to 116th. We've got many more communication issues, and so we're working on how we're going to, our plan is to, how we're going to plan to bring all that in together in the new control system into the new Public Works Facility. Construction that is finished or finishing, the Vallard Water Main Project is pretty much done. That was some on Second Street. I know this map's hard to see. They came in the right spot in there. And then there was some on Vallard. That took all year, all summer. There's just a punch list that KLJ is working on. The west side, 18-inch tie from the water tank to 30th is, the construction's done on that. And I believe the system's online. I think they got the back tees and everything done last week on that. So that project is completed. The water main replacement project state, which includes, I think that's one of the, no, that's a lift station. It is this right here, some water main here and some pressure-reducing valves. And it included this right here on 14th. That is, let's see, what's, the major items remaining are paving on the second lift on 14th, pouring concrete collars around manholes and gate valves, and hydro seating. Hydrostatic testing was done at the water main at BSU, and bacteria testing was done last week. On 14th Street up in this area, they're doing one lift to get us through the winter and then in the spring, because they just got that done. And the spring will come back and do the second lift on that. Any questions on those projects? Maybe Loretta can give you an update on some more.
President Johnson, Commissioners, I have updates on 12th Street West. That project is right in here, from 13th Street West to Highway 22. That construction is pretty much finished, and we've been out and put together a punch list of items that need to be taken care of. But for the most part, that one's wrapped up. 10th Avenue West, from 29th, not very steady here, 29th up to 40th. That's been out to bid, but that low bidder was Meyer, and we have not awarded that yet. The bid amount was about 2.4 million. Highway 22 Landscaping, that is going from 14th up to the county line, right about in here. There's a little bit going on. That one was bid on Friday, and I don't have the results from that bid opening. Let's see, Empire Road over by the new hospital is in design. I believe it's shown right here. But I think the route for that has, oh, here we go. The route for that has changed a little bit. I haven't seen the updated plans yet, but they're moving forward with that one. Then we have quite a few projects that are in design, have some permit applications that were put out for the railroad, Southwest Water, the DOT. And those projects are the west side, 24-inch dedicated water main. That runs right along here and down over here. That one is planned to be bid in February on the 18th. The east side water main continues on from here over around 10th. We're tying in. And that one is planned to be bid on March 4th. State Avenue improvements, you know, there's been a lot of discussion on that, up to 40th.
There we go.
That one, we have planned for bid January 24th, and the project notification letters for that was sent out to residents last Thursday. So they should all be getting that update. Just kind of giving them a heads up on what's going to be going on and what we're all doing out there. 21st Street improvements, let's see here, right in here, we have planned for bid February 4th, and 40th Street East improvements, which is up in here. That project was originally split into two pieces, and we are now combining those to be one project next year. And that is going out for bid January 7th, the planned bid. Another item that I also wanted to mention is our master drainage plan. Brent, that was here earlier talking about the MS-4, is going to come back in December. We're planning the December 16th meeting to talk to you and kind of give you an overview of where we're at, where they're at with the master drainage plan and things we need to do to keep that moving forward. Do you have any questions for me on any of these projects? Happy to answer them at this time.
I have a question on State's Avenue and 21st Street. The road design, is that with the curb and gutter, or is it with the, kind of the rural design with the ditch?
You know, I haven't seen those plans yet, but my recollection is we're looking at more of a urban section.
An urban section, which would be curb and gutter.
Curb and gutter.
So would, do we have plans then to come back for the State's Avenue that's from 15th to 21st Street to convert that into an urban design?
You know, I'm not sure what we're looking at for that section.
But you think from 21st North that that's an urban section?
I believe that was the discussion.
That is, okay. Great, well, good.
Okay. Anyone else? Thank you.
Mr. Zurov, anything else on your?
No, I just wanted to give a quick update of some of the municipal projects going on. And as you can see, there's just a lot going on in the city. And next spring, there'll be a lot of development projects going also.
No, I think you two communicated that very well. I mean, there just is a lot going on, and it's almost overwhelming, but...
It's nice to have the visual to go along with it. It makes it a little more easy to follow along with.
Yeah, I was thinking maybe of taking that along to the legislature and just show them what, what kind of the impact that the energy industry is having on us.
I do want to thank Loretta. She did make that map, too, so that's, and we can update that.
We just kind of figured that.
Yeah.
You know, with all the construction that we'll have next summer, I mean, it's going to be unreal. We're going to really need to enhance our communication with the public to tell them what's going on when, and what's, where detours are, and what's shut down, and that's going to really be important.
One of the things we talked about at our last meeting was, you know, informing the public ahead of time, just like the 24-inch East Broadway. That's going to impact a lot of residents and businesses, to try to communicate that effectively. I've talked to Mr. Meyer about, I've seen some other cities have a construction zone blinking on their website that gives you weekly updates of the construction. And I think with all this going on, we need to have all the different contractors and construction management teams trying to update the city on a weekly notice. At least we can get that out to the public and make sure that they look at that site and see, you know, what projects are going on when. And I think that's a start. I know there's, we talked about having, you know, maybe a preconstruction meeting for homeowners on how we're going to do traffic control, things like that. We have talked about it, and I think, hopefully, we'll get a good system down, not after everything's done, but before construction begins.
Okay. Well, let's move on to Tab 8, Community Development. Mr. Catan?
Mr. President, Commissioners, we have three rezoning petitions tonight. The first one is a rezoning from Ag to General Industrial for approximately 25-acre parcel. It's located to the east of 35th Avenue and to the north of 32nd Street. City staff recommends approval with one attached condition. There are no changes from the first reading.
Thank you, Mr. Catan. If there's anyone from the public that would like to comment on 1530, you may do so now. Come to the podium, state your name, hear your comments. There's no one from the public. Any comments or questions by city commissioners?
I'll move approve second reading, 1530.
Second, Tab?
We have the motion, the second. Any discussion? Hearing done, we'll vote. Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Alman?
Aye.
Mr. Stuckert?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries.
Mr. President, the next item is an amendment to the existing Pine Crest Commons PBD to reconfigure the interior roadway or road network to designate a water tower site, to relocate school, school site, to add civic zoning designation, and to increase the total multifamily dwelling units to 550. There are no changes from the first reading. Mr. President?
Thank you, Mr. Catan. If there's anyone from the public that would like to comment regarding 1531, you may do so now. Come to the podium, state your name, hear your comments. No one from the public. Any comments by commissioners?
Make motion to approve second reading, final passage of ordinance 1531.
Second.
We have the motion on the second. Any discussion? Hearing done, we'll vote. Mr. Alman?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mrs. Stuckert?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries.
Last rezoning tonight is a rezoning petition from Rural Residential to General Commercial and General Industrial. The site is located to the east of Highway 22 and to the south of 32nd Street Southwest. City staff recommends approval with reattached conditions. There are no changes from the first reading. Mr. President?
Thank you, Mr. Catan. If there's anyone from the public that would like to comment on ordinance 1532, you may do so now. Come to the podium, state your name. We'll hear your comments. If there's no one from the public that wishes to comment, any comments by city commissioners? Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve second reading and final passage ordinance 1532.
Second.
We have the motion on the second. Any discussion? Hearing done, we'll vote. Mrs. Stuckert?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Alman?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. So the motion carries. Anything else, Mr. Catan?
No, Mr. President.
Any comments or questions for Mr. Catan? Any issues by commissioners?
I just have a question, Mayor Johnson. I've had some comments from the public, and Mr. Kessel and I have already talked to it. Is there any reason that we couldn't start our meetings with the Pledge of Allegiance?
I don't know.
Mr. President, Commissioner Stuckert, there's certainly no impediment to doing that. If it would be okay with you, we can discuss it among city staff and bring a recommendation to you if that makes sufficient.
Thank you.
Is there anything else? Okay. Is there anyone from the public that would like to address us?
I didn't vote to that.
Did we not do that? We didn't, did we? Okay, there's no one from the public that would like to address us. We did omit having a motion to approve the financial report We did omit having a motion to approve the financial report as presented. Is there such a motion?
I'll move.
I'll second.
We have the motion, the second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Alman?
Aye.
Mrs. Stuckert?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. The motion carries. There's no other business. The chair had entertained a motion to adjourn.
So move.
We have the motion, the second, over here. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those say nay. The motion carries.